All right, let's go ahead and get started. We'll begin today. Trish is gonna volunteer to do an opening prayer, and then we'll have Dave do the flip-flop first.
Heavenly Father, we're so grateful that we can gather here together as people in the community and be able to make decisions and do things that are best for our community. We pray that you will have thy Spirit to be with us, that we will do things that are right in thy sight. We are grateful for all the wonderful blessings we've enjoyed for this wonderful country that we live in, and we say sin's named by our Jesus Christ.
All right. See after me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jim, roll call with you.
Jim Chase.
Jared Peterson.
Nelson Abbott.
Kyle Ellis.
Trisha Thomas.
Paul Crook.
Jim, cue. We need to have a timeframe approval. So no approval. Second. Who, who, oh, Jim.
Jim. Jared.
Okay. On paper?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, do we have anybody on public forum discussion?
There is, but I think he's gonna speak under number one anyhow.
Okay.
Yep.
Great. And is there any other at all?
Yep.
Okay, we'll go ahead and be done with that part of public forum, and we'll turn it over and have an annexation discussion. You're up.
I'm up.
Yep.
Thank you. My name is Rob McNeil, and the parcel plan I am talking about tonight is just off of 112th. I brought you guys some apps to look at. And I'm looking at annexing these, um, there are six total parcels that are included in that green highlighted area right here, these six right here. And, um, looking at annexing this piece in to the city and putting in a residential subdivisions here. Um, it's my understanding, um, I'm fully aware that the roads are gonna be widened here on 112th, you know, by the county. Um, it's my understanding that the current zoning on here, or the general plan, is to put in like quarter acre lots into that area. Is that right, Royce?
Quarter acre?
Uh, quarter acre?
R fifteen, sorry.
R fifteen.
Yeah. And so my, my, um, what, why I'm here tonight is to find out what we could do. I know that the subdivision to the east and the subdivisions to the south are eight thousand square foot lots, point one eight. Um, I'm aware that this parcel to the west and to the south here, you know, if, it's commercial, a lot of it is commercial. And so I'm wondering if we could, what the council, how the council would feel if we did point one eight here. Generally, the cities like to have, you know, a buffer or small lots next to commercial, not commercial, bigger lots, bigger homes, and then smaller, you know, because these are about eight thousand square foot lots, these are eight thousand square foot lots. I believe this was owned for townhomes at one time. And so the discussion that I would like to bring up is how the city council would feel in going with smaller lots here, because we are going next to a commercial piece right here. I mean, I've done several subdivisions against commercial, and I've always, you know, you've always have a, you know, a buffer of smaller lots, not bigger homes, then smaller lots. And I'd like to just have some feedback of what your thoughts are of keeping it point one eight or eight thousand square foot lots right there. Hmm? Yep.
Um, I would probably say no, because we've been brought for, not on exactly this thing, no, I know, but we've told all these other developers in very similar areas, no. You know what I mean? That, that's my own personal thing, because I feel like what, what makes you different than the other people we've already said no to. You know what I mean? Just trying to be fair.
Yeah. No, I, so my question would be, do you think people would have a hard time putting in bigger homes on that spot if you're, if you, if they're going right next to commercial?
I don't know that it will ever be commercial.
What do you, what do you feel that this piece would go as, and this piece?
Because it's not, it's in county right now. It could go either way, right?
But we put the general plan.
The general plan.
The general plan does call out commercial.
With residential buffering. And same thing up here, there's a piece of commercial.
Listen, I'm not saying I couldn't be convinced. I'm saying my initial response would be no.
Yeah. So I'll just bring up several points. The last time this came forward, Nelson reminded us about sewer connections at Payson. Was limited there. Since this is, you know, the property around it that are the higher density, it's not really higher density because they have open space. They've got parks and that kind of thing included. So that's how they were able to achieve that.
Yeah.
Um, and now the city has two parks that they didn't wanna own, and they've had to take them over. And, um, turning the general plan, they actually wrote the PUD out of the code, right, Royce? So the only, the only place it's allowed to do PUD was the master plan right up here that was moving forward prior to that. So there's several reasons why, I mean, I feel, and the, the way that some of these other projects around here have been rejected, on the permits are going smaller than a third acre lot, there's, I mean, those are several points. And to be consistent with the general plan, you know, removing the PUD, and that's what I, I would be opposed to, the smaller lots.
Well, we would have some open space down here, our retention laws.
Well, you're gonna have that, whether we give you that or not.
Right.
Because you gotta retain the water.
Yeah.
So, so the density on those other parcels actually worked out to be like third acre, but with the open space.
On which parcels?
Well, when you're referencing these other.
You're referencing, so this is a huge part in the middle of it. So on average, this whole subdivision would have come out to be like third acre lots, but they went smaller lots and then had the open spaces.
Okay.
This one up here, same thing. You have the park here, and then I wasn't sure, I think maybe some of this was dedicated with it. And the big detention pond, some of it's not finished, but the reality is, is we now have a park here and here that was supposed to have been HOA owned. And now the cities have to take over the HOAs.
Yeah.
And the number, I mean, it's the number of sewer connections. We're locked in with Payson, it's limited.
Okay. But doesn't the sewer line right here go through Salem?
We're also limited there.
Yeah, we're, we're limited on.
Basically, when, when we negotiated the sewer agreement with Salem, we were only allowed the number of connections over here, period.
Okay.
We'd have to renegotiate.
I mean, it would have to be renegotiated.
So if there is sewer capability and a lotment here is through Salem, then are we able to run through Salem?
So part of the reason that we're limited there is the size of the sewer line that is taking that sewer there.
Okay.
In other words, when we worked this agreement out, this whole area over here is in Salem now.
Okay.
And they're using that line that used to service the rest of town to meet their needs. So in other words, that line would have to be significantly upgraded probably.
Across the canal and.
Under the canal and over. And our code, right now, we don't have the ability to have smaller lots like that within our code. I mean, it's not even in our code anymore.
Yeah. Well, that's why I wanted to have the discussion, because these would be bigger lots stuck between commercial and point one eight acres. You know, I just wanted to see what your thoughts were. I mean, would it fit, I mean, I don't know if townhomes would fit here or not, but it would be a good buffer between commercial and, and residential, but.
My house would be aged if I got townhomes coming. Is it, do you own this land?
There is a, there's a real affordable group forum too.
Do you own all this land, or are you looking at buying it?
I have it under contract.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because if you, could you come back with a little bit bigger lots? Because these are, these ones are bigger, right? But not these.
They're all pretty much the same.
They are. I thought, no, some of these are bigger.
So, well, yeah, these are on the cul-de-sac like fourteen thousand. These are on the cul-de-sac, and these are eight thousand.
Yeah, because these are eight thousand, these are fourteen.
So they probably average more than eight thousand because of the cul-de-sac lots. You get some big lots there. So the average is probably gonna be higher.
Um, Nelson's right. We've, we've written that the ability to do what he proposed is no longer in the city limits.
We've done the city surveys and cities, the people down towards us spoken, they don't want small lots. And these small lots that are down there, I'm hearing complaints every once in a while, I can't do any of my lot because it's too small. Developer, and we're gonna make modifications on some of our setbacks because they couldn't fit the houses in that people want on those little lots. So the people have spoken, they want larger lots.
Yeah.
That's the reason.
Can I understand that? I, I really do, I understand that. It's just that this piece is a little bit pinched in between commercial and smaller lots.
But we all know it's gonna be commercial. We have no idea.
Okay. The general plan does say.
The, the, the general plan calls it that. That's what we want there.
Yeah.
We do want.
But if someone buys it and wants to do residential.
But it's.
We may.
Not sure that would get through either.
Well, that's what that, how many people are coming in that one piece?
Well, this, this other piece here, it was proposed, and, and the reason that, you know, I can only speak for myself, but when I voted no on this, when they proposed residential, is because it's supposed to be commercial.
Right.
No, we said no too, because they wanted to rezone it too, because it's smaller lots. Three separate developers.
Right, and that's, that was part of the reason we took it out of the code, because it didn't.
I guess that's the thing, like, even if it is a buffer, like, we've already told all these other people no based on the same reasoning, that I feel like, I just wanna be consistent with my plan.
Have you done the math on going to the fifteen thousand?
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, three dollars a square foot, three dollars a square foot, and you have less connections, less construction, less infrastructure.
Yeah.
That would.
It just.
You may, you may run the numbers, and, and if you're looking to sell lots, then.
Yeah, I've run the numbers, and.
You may be sixes, you may be a heads, you may not, I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah, it just, as a developer standpoint, you know, with, with the smaller lots around and you're, you're bumping up against commercial, which is what the general plan calls for, sometimes it's harder, you know, to put in bigger homes when you're next to commercial. You know? I mean.
Yeah.
But I think the reality is those homes are gonna be there a long time before it's commercial.
Yeah. And the commercial, you get there, it's gonna be.
That's gonna be mom and pop, it's gonna be small.
For a long time. I mean, for me, I mean, we spent a lot of time on general plans.
Yeah.
Right? Looked at this area very carefully about how to design this with commercial, and, and part of the problem we had was with putting homes here, or commercial here, was this set of houses that says, they don't want the commercial, they don't want that. So we built in a buffer, we went through all this process, right, during that with our planner, to make sure that this area would accommodate both the residential and commercial, and my recommendation is that we stick with our plan.
Yeah. I mean, otherwise, what's fun down the planet? We're gonna change it.
Right. And, and if you try to gain it with open space, that's a, that's a real, that's a real negative.
For us.
For us, right.
So we don't wanna take that.
We just don't want, we want open space, but it's gotta be different kind of open space, and so most of that open space going forward is gonna be on the south side of town, is where we really want it. So we really want those little bit bigger lots, and like Jared said, that's how they got the PUDs to have that.
They actually came in, it was this whole area here, this area, and all the way up to Goose Nest, that was all brought in as one, there were, there were different faces, but it was all one PUD.
Uh huh.
And, you know, there was a lot of, let's just say it caused a lot of feelings at that point in time, even with the people that were clear up in this end of town about even having that kind of density to begin with.
So, you know, that's, that's, I mean, I don't see enough reason to modify what we, the work we went into in the general plan. That's mine.
Yeah. Well, we just barely wrapped that up too.
And we just barely wrapped it up. I think it's still valid.
Yeah.
Don't get me wrong, I live on a lot of point one eight. I like it because it's small, it's less to water, less to mow. It's easier to take care of than my, my bigger lot now, but, you know, it's not what the people in town want.
Okay. Well, well, it's, I just thought it was worth the discussion, just because the surrounding.
Well, that's what I wanted to cover.
The surrounding area are smaller.
And we recognized that when we went through the whole general plan. We spent a lot of time on this area.
Well, I was on the zoning commission at the time, and we had.
I mean, both were.
We, yeah, and we, I mean, there was a lot of comments that were geared around, you know, getting rid of the PUDs, and, you know, with feedback from the city, the staff, having to maintain, you know, new parks, and also the residents.
Yeah.
You know, that, I, I think if you ran the numbers, I think you'd come out about the same, maybe smaller, but that's just my, unless you're, you know, making money per house and you're building them, but I, I don't know.
Okay.
That's my, that's, there, there's just no way to facilitate it. I mean, right now, we would have to write it back in, and that's.
Write it back in, go through public hearings, rezone it, go through public hearing.
And the current zoning is R one fifteen.
That's the smallest.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I appreciate your time.
Okay.
So, thank you.
We'll go back to work.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, Jared, let's talk about the Central Utah Dispatch name resolution.
Okay, so, I've been on one meeting when this was on there, so, I guess prior to me going down there, I don't know, maybe it's part of it, I don't know, when they did it, but, um, whatever it was before, the nine one one. They teamed up with Juve County, right? So now it's more of the just Utah County Dispatch. And I guess that's all listed in there, but I guess this, I don't know what you call it, the agreement, it is about the name change, and that's what it is. Yeah. Because it's about changing the name to actually represent what it is. That's the way I understand it.
Yeah.
I read it, it was kinda my take on the two.
Lot of legalese stuff in there.
Yeah, whereas on what.
Right, well.
Well, and it's.
Severability of power.
It's got regulations because of what it is, the type of entity.
Yeah.
But it's just for me, if there's a name change, we have to, as a member, set up on the resolution. I mean, it's just like when we put the bill on board, and they have the resolution, putting, sounds dumb, so.
So this lays, list the Juve County, Juve County, parts of cities.
Well, minus, I don't think Crook's in there. Yeah, there are some cities, there are some cities that have their own dispatch, and apparently if there needs to be some communication there, they, they came up with, yeah, they have their own dispatch.
You ever have a big event, they have a way to.
Well, if something happens to county, then county can go to the, you know, their dispatch can transfer to their areas, or if something happens to Springville, or Orem, or Crook, or wherever, they, county can take that over. That's how that works.
It's all part of the NIM's protocol.
Yeah.
Yeah. And Orem and Linn are actually on the same.
Just redundancy.
Yeah.
Just like our, well, redundancy.
So, that's, that's a name change, you know, reflective of having Juve and some, some of those areas down south too.
Yeah, and Juve County that in there marks in the cities.
A little bit of area.
Yeah, that's a little area. Lot of area.
You got Neefine and the dam.
Speedway line.
And all of Juve County.
Yeah, so maybe it goes clear out Nevada State line. Yeah, they, they're, they're busy, because you got a little Sahara sand there, and she got I fifteen. I mean, they, they average, I'm trying to remember, I got a friend that's on my little van, pardon, and they have three or four calls a day. Because I have fifteen. Um, so, and they, they're not around with the runs down through.
The holidays, I'm sure, there's a little Sierra.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they stay to helicopter out there.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm.
Part of the reason we don't have a helicopter in Payson anymore, because it went to Neefine.
What?
No.
For what? Not the hospital?
To get the company.
Hospital has one, doesn't it?
No. They're depending from that six month.
I've seen it flying over us.
Well, they'll come in there, but they're not stationed there.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah. It's not always sitting out there. Okay.
The one in Payson was a different company too, they had the yellow chopper.
Yeah, yeah.
They kinda, kinda run the belly up.
Oh, they did?
Yeah. We were talking to a pilot that was based in Neefine, but they're showing a couple weeks ago.
It is. Everything used to be in Payson.
Why do you have to pass?
So that's why I.
That's what I understood too.
Yeah.
Works for me.
Are we okay? We are. Somebody needs to make a motion, huh? Resolution, how's that work?
Eighteen zero nine eleven.
Want to write that down?
Dash one R.
Can I write on this?
Yep.
Eighteen dash zero nine?
Dash eleven.
Eleven.
Dash one R.
One R.
There we go. Okay. I'll make a motion that we pass resolution eighteen dash oh nine dash eleven dash one R, approving an interlocal agreement, medding, and joining Central Utah nine one one.
Okay, we have a motion on table. Do we have a second?
A second.
Your second said, you need to go do a roll call vote. Start with Jim.
Aye.
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 Passes unanimously.
I think it's appropriate that we pass it on nine eleven.
And that's, um, yeah.
It looks happy with their web.
Yeah, definitely. By the way, the reason why I let you talk and all that, this is a discussion we had, we just combined it all together in one meeting, because we wanted to.
Yeah, that's why I was like.
For the house. I appreciate that. You know me, don't you? Trish, be quiet. Is there time for the well? So, yeah, sure, let's have a couple discussions.
Uh, so Torres definitely passed their deadline.
Yeah.
Um, we even were accommodating with a few days, just because we had a couple of things that, um, we had to get done, so. But right now, they have failed their second bacteria test, so they, for coliform, so they've gotta figure that out. Um, the wellhouse, all the rock is up, um, all the line is in. The electrician is still pulling a few more wires. He just got the vein wires from the box to the, to the wellhouse today.
Okay.
So.
Transformer in there?
Yeah, the transformer's in. Um, we still don't have our hatch over the well, I mean, over the pump. You know, that, you got that opening over the pump that they can pull it, so, still waiting on that, we're still waiting on a few things, and then this bacteria thing is, is gonna be an issue. But they're talking possibly starting, being able to start the well on Thursday. Um, just to, you know, once they get the power to it. That won't be an official startup though.
No, that's just discharge, just give it color of the water.
Yeah. Make sure they get it going the right way instead of the wrong way. Uh, the fence is up.
Wait, is the fence up or just the posts?
No, the fence is up. He did that today.
Oh, okay.
Um, they still put the barbed wire on. I think that's about it, there's.
So they're losing money on the deal.
I was gonna ask you some questions.
So we don't talk about that right now until the end. Yep. With them, because you wanna keep a good relationship with them, and so you start talking about penalties and that, you know.
And we have to go, and even then we'll go back and review everything and make sure that.
There wasn't any rain days or anything like that, yeah. Just making sure, so.
So what is the, what are they gonna do about bac, what's the next step with bacteria then? Because that's a.
Is that the end of the line coming up?
That's the main line.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's.
I mean, surely they didn't come out with well.
No, um, it's, it was in the pipe itself. So, and when they installed the pipe, you know, when you install pipe, you put the, uh, the chlorine into it, well, they filled the line from here on top at the, at the cul, at the roundabout and washed all that down and.
So the bottom part's clean.
Yeah. So I told them what they need to do is take their water truck, mix the chlorine in their water truck, and then put it into the pipe. We'll see if they do that this time out. They failed twice, so.
So they did, they just repeated. How did they do the second one?
So he took and put some chlorine in the top, because we have a, a back, air back up there.
Okay.
And put like half his bottle in there and then.
Fill it up?
Yep, milk the line, and then put the rest of his bottle into it, and then let it bake over the weekend. Well, still didn't get it mixed up in there enough, so, yeah, um, yeah, that's where we're at. That's, it's all at that. Were any questions or?
Not about that, but we have a question about something else.
No, we don't need any of those, yeah. Nope.
You gotta get a mouse.
Did it come back? Did they, did that also put an E. coli test? Were we okay on E. coli?
Yeah, E. coli's fine.
Okay, good.
That's just coliforms. E. coli form isn't a harmful bacteria. It's just a measure of you have an issue.
It's organic, but it's not E. coli, it's not the deadly stuff.
Yeah, so we're good there. So.
But you have to be a zero.
Mm-hmm. Yep, it's gotta be clean. So when the test just came back, they come back and say present. They don't come back to anything else like how much or whatever.
Oh, okay.
And it doesn't matter if there was two hundred parts per million, it doesn't matter, it's still gonna be zero. So present's good enough, it's a cheaper test.
So when are they gonna do that? Tomorrow?
I'll talk to him tomorrow.
I expect they wanna get it done pretty quick.
Yeah, they need to. Because they, because we, that's another thing too, is we still gotta get the system all certified with the state before we can even pump water into our system.
Yeah.
So, we're still a little bit out.
What is that, more, do they come out, or do we just have to generate a bunch of reports and?
You know what, Mayor, I'm not positive on that. It's, I can talk to Robert just to be clarification on that, but.
And they got the SCADA talking to each other yet, or anything like that?
No, we're still letting them finish wires, the electricians. This guy, he's a, he's like a noon to five guy. He doesn't like working very much.
Making too much money.
Yeah, this electrician, yeah. I don't know.
Okay.
Go work with them. Sounds like it. I have a question off the subject. How's my parking lot coming?
So the parking lot, um, we got the plans from RB. I went over with Shay, and he's like, everything looked fine. So I let RB know yesterday that, um, we accepted their plans and, and looking forward to them starting. So, um, I'll call Dallas and just bump them and see if he has a start date tomorrow. Or actually Thursday, probably. I'll be in a class tomorrow in, in Saratoga, so.
So we'll be.
But you guys are moving on it, so.
Yeah, yes, yes.
All right.
Definitely. Yeah, it's gonna be done.
It's happening. And I think we'll go with just a regular yield sign for now, because we can add on the flash if we need to. We can kinda see how things go over the problem.
Are we gonna strike it?
I'm not getting, putting flashes on there, by the way.
No, I know, but that's like, you saw how much they are.
Yeah, but you know what? Three grand for the two of them, or four of them, or whatever it is, I don't, that's a, for a side or what, but.
The one on Elk Ridge Drive, we definitely could use.
Yeah. But if we need it, we'll put them up.
Yeah.
If there's a problem.
But we'll strike it no matter what, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
So that's the main.
Yes.
Because that's not gonna get the use that.
No, Elk Ridge Drive does.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we're gonna strike Elk Ridge Drive, and I figured going from Golden Eagle Way to Pine Tree Cove, that's where the trail is at, so, um, I've talked with, um, Echols already.
Golden Eagle Way over to Pro, yeah, right, not down to Skyhawk.
No, yeah.
Good, good, good.
Can we revisit one other?
That's what we talked about.
Thing why we're talking about all this. What about those little fish?
But you're not committed yet, right? You're not gonna commit Echols to do the striping on Elk Ridge Drive yet, or are we?
Yeah, he is.
You tell me. Because.
Let's do it.
It sounded like you were ready to do it.
I told him I wanted to.
You have a concern?
Does Royce have a concern?
Yeah, I have a concern.
What?
I don't know where this ties into which project.
Uh, well. Gotta put my hat on, huh? No, let's separate the concerns. Do you have any concerns about where it would go?
No, not where it goes.
Okay. That was a budget.
You're stressing ourselves out.
He's my man, right there, man. Like, okay, where does this get funded from?
Yeah, I don't know where this all came from.
Yeah, okay. You weren't in there with the mayor.
I was not in there with you two. So you two are patrons.
Never again, these two.
Well, we'll have to talk about that before we commit.
Yes, let's do that.
We gave Royce a hard time.
Sorry, Royce. Yeah, let's do that.
What about, okay.
The technique that, come out.
The technique that would come out of, would that come out of parks and trails or would that come out of?
Yeah, cause it's for the trail. No, you put it in the trails, cause don't we have money in there?
For trails, but not this year.
Oh, never mind, put it in the roads.
Yeah, we already had that slotted for, yeah, we'll, we'll have to talk.
We'll figure it out.
Okay, in Hawaii, they have those fisheye mirrors everywhere, guys, everywhere, I really think we have to think about getting one.
What?
Those little fisheye mirrors, you know, where my blind corner, I just, I bring it up every time, all over Hawaii they have them, like everywhere, and I was like, why don't we get one of those? Come on, what if, what if we looked into it?
Well, we did at one point in time.
No, we didn't, we just shut it down.
They used to have one on the deck.
And it goes down.
And took it down.
Yeah, we actually had a conversation, I don't know, before you were on the council.
Okay.
But apparently initiative stepped on toes, so it didn't go any further at that point. I, I think that merits another discussion, they had one up by my wife's grandparents' place up off of Highland Drive up in Holiday. And that was the only way you could see a car was coming, is what they mentioned, and it was like this big around and they did the job, and it was, and you know what? Somebody took it out with the car and they haven't replaced it yet, so now when I leave grandmother's house, I go a different way, cause you can't see, I mean, it's, makes this one look like you got wide open spaces, it's, it was that bad.
Honestly, if I'm going, they can see you a lot better, you, you can't see them, but they can see you.
Yes, we can see.
But like, I have no idea.
Coming down, we can see, but it's easy, it's easy.
But that just means hurry and speed up.
You're not.
So you don't get to go.
Yeah.
Like, what if that's not su, cause I'm thinking that's cheaper than pouring the concrete and trying to move stuff out, like, isn't it, just what if I'm here?
I don't know how.
Does that open us up for liabilities and things like that?
Like visibility, I mean, cause you, you gotta see farther with the cars coming past here, right?
Well, I think just if I could see an extra thirty feet, I'd be fine.
And where do you put it, across the street?
Yeah, you put it across the street, sort of be over there in a little.
Yeah, it's tilted so that it looks up and then I can just look in and.
But when it, when it knows out there, you can see up to that diner.
In, in.
And then if you put the mirror across the street, you're gonna be staring at bushes with a car behind it.
I don't know about that, I think we might be able to see, it'd be worth looking at, wouldn't it? I just.
I'm thinking twenty miles an hour.
Well, no one knows that, that's the problem, is everyone speeds so much. That you're like, I'm getting honked at when I pull out.
We'll go down there, we'll, we'll put some Jersey berries, we'll just pull Skyhawk off.
We'll go twenty, till the elementary's there and four hours on the day, it's gonna be blinking twenty miles an hour.
Well, that's fine, that's fine, when the kids are there.
Oh, yeah.
Doing that, but we, when we proved the school, we, they were very clear that they were not gonna have any access from the school.
They're on that.
Everything's gonna be on that jackrabbit run or whatever the name of it is.
Alright, do you have?
That's a good name, I'm gonna use that.
Thirty plus.
Right, that gets you up these deep.
Yeah, I don't know, it's.
Well, what, what would we do to look into it, if we were to, doesn't anyone think we should look into it other than me?
Well, I would be, I would look at, I would consider it.
Anyone else?
That doesn't mean I'm gonna do it, yes.
Well, I don't think it hurts.
Yeah, it doesn't.
I'm, I'm sure we're looking into options, I'm not sure that that's gonna be the best option though.
Okay.
Cause I'm, I, I don't know if there's other options that we could. Entertain, right, that would be somewhat effective. If you just get people down to thirty, thirty, thirty two.
Oh, we'd be okay.
Thirty two miles an hour, right, thirty three.
That's still visibility so bad that, like, what did he say, when, when we had that analyzed, didn't he say it would need to be like a fifteen mile per hour zone to how it'd be safe for us to actually see it far enough?
No, it was thirty, from, from this point where the car stops.
Yeah, yeah, that's why it's not.
It was thirty five, remember?
Yeah.
And then we did that analysis, about got hit in the street, did the analysis.
That's why it's thirty and not thirty five.
And came out that we could do thirty. Based on, based on where the stop sign is now.
When that was initially designed, clear back when the PUD was approved, initially that was gonna be a forty mile an hour.
Yeah, well, if the fence weren't there, this wouldn't be an issue.
Sure.
No, okay, so, you know, this issue stems a part, I mean, so it slipped through on planes only, that you introduced an intersection into a curve of a road. And our code specifically says you're not to do that. You're supposed to have, I think it's a hundred and twenty or a hundred and eighty feet of straight to each intersection.
But wasn't his fence in before the intersection ever went in?
Yeah, before the road changed.
Before the road changed, the fence was in.
I'm just, I'm just saying that.
I think that was a funny problem too.
You're putting that intersection into a curve.
Why do you hate that new road, I love the new road? I don't know.
The red cars is the road.
Yep, that's the inner, you know, that inner curve, if that was straight, you go fifty five, you could see it.
You're right, you're right. It's just such, and I know, okay, I know there hasn't been anything yet, but like, it's probably just a matter of time, you know? Don't you think, I mean, it's a blind corner for us.
It's so much worse on Skyhawk than it is coming down.
That's the thing, when you're going out.
We see a fine coming down, we, we see it clear down, clear down.
Yeah.
I know that.
Cut around the corner, whoa, there.
And I have no idea you guys could see us that well until I was driving and I'm like, why are these jerks going so fast?
Yeah.
They don't want me to pull out, but I can't see them, to know they were there, so I'm pulling out.
But coming off of Skyhawk, it's a little scary.
But I've been honked at, passed, I mean, everything like, and I'm like, I didn't know you were there, I'm not like trying to be a jerk, you may even have seen me, I can't see you. Anyway, I thought maybe even if we had the fisheye, then make them aware that that really is a blind corner, cause I do think a lot of people don't know that.
Well, so there's fisheye, there's.
Block of.
Moving the.
Moving the, yeah, moving the strip.
I think striping and make sure that we get it away from the right side.
Yes.
Is an important thing, keep the cars as far left there as we can, right, so squish that down to a ten foot lane.
With those slow people down to.
Strike at ten feet.
No, but it'd get, make it easier for you to.
The application of. You need a car over five feet, you, you could see up there.
Oh, yeah, for sure, well, I'm half out in the lane before I can actually see everything I need to see.
Right.
So, yeah.
Right, then there's, you know.
If, if I trick right, I'm okay.
Like one of those speed limit signs that flash, you know what I mean, coming down the hill.
Yeah, that would help too.
Tied to a camera that took your license plate number.
Doing wish.
Even that, yes, there's the flashies, like.
No, the flashies, because they put the flashies on my road, on Skyhawk, and I'll tell you what, I am so aware, well, it stopped working, that thing doesn't work right now, is it working?
We have a. All you're talking about with Sherry.
Yeah, Sherry, I'll tell you what, people are not speeding down that road as much.
And I, I, you know, I've heard a lot of people say it doesn't help, but.
It helps me, I.
I think it does help, I think it makes people aware, you know, the little thing starts to flash and then it goes red and goes crazy, right?
You're talking about that one?
Yeah.
Well, like the ones Mason has.
And Salem has them too.
And Salem's park, there's a bunch of them.
Yeah, they, that's shameful, when you're doing that.
Some people say, oh, that's the, that's just a radar gun to see how fast I can get it up to, right?
Can I make the moonlight light flash?
Cause I think, I was still behind you.
Let's let the kids go on their bikes.
But I don't think that's the case, I think that's the rarity.
Yeah, I think most people are like, oh, I wasn't, I didn't.
It's like, oh, I gotta get back down to where it's not flashing at me anymore.
Exactly, exactly, that's why.
Well, that's thirty four miles an hour.
Exactly, but even if they were going thirty four, I guess that gives you a little more.
People are whipping it.
I think, good.
They are.
I mean, I know about it, so I go slower down that road. So maybe, maybe there's an education component here, I mean, I don't know. Maybe some of these people don't, don't know about it.
But that's what I'm saying.
But we put, and then there's probably those of them. Right, if you really want to get sophisticated, you can put a, flashes on a, on the T side, right, to turn on, when there's a car on Skyhawk.
Right.
Probably they do a, not provoking.
Right, soon you get there, they start to go off, right, I mean, that's a lot of money. But now you know somebody's coming down, right? Coming into the Skyhawk, but, so there's other options to, but I might be.
I mean, something like that, I think you're bringing a liability to the city if that thing's not working right or, you know, I don't know.
Also, I had somebody ask me about putting a cell tower in up here, did we hear anything about that? No?
No, I'm bringing a cell tower.
It's like, I'm gonna talk to a people that know that will do that, no, they're gonna call the city, I'm like, you're what, like the worst cell reception in the city of the universe.
Do it, there's money.
Yeah, and now, yeah, that building going with the well, like, let's put it there.
And it's in the city.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the last time, uh.
Yeah, when we talked about it.
When the hill snaked it up, my.
Yeah, but I'd make them.
It's good, I'm, I'm all for that.[1702.31]